All right, let's get the show on the road. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Winnetka Village Council's study session for January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. We'd like to call the meeting to order and ask everyone to mute your cell phones or other electronic devices, and I'll ask Rob to do a roll call for attendance.
Thank you. Trustee Orsick?
Present.
Trustee Handler?
Here.
Trustee Dearborn?
Here.
Trustee Alvinson?
Here.
Trustee Dahlman?
Here.
President Rince?
Here.
All right, item two is public comment. This is the time of the evening where anybody who wishes may address the village council on any item that is not on this evening's agenda.
Oh, I don't have my timer in. Well, anyway, you know, I'm back again because, again, I want to bring up the fact that a couple of years ago, you gave away a sidewalk, a public sidewalk, for no value, I mean, for no benefit to the village, and, you know, no one noticed, I didn't notice, you were able to legally hide all that, destroy the tapes. I just have to wonder why. The emails, emails from village staff say it plainly, the council made the decision to vacate that sidewalk in closed session. That's, the emails say it. And nothing can be done, right? But we can still hope for open and honest government. And so, all that's left are meeting minutes from a closed meeting from two years ago, two-plus years ago, and the council continues to keep those meeting minutes closed. Yes, there was another matter discussed, and yes, that matter may still need to be closed and secret, but there is nothing prohibiting the council from saying to redact the portions of the meeting that don't deal with the sidewalk and let the public know what was discussed in that meeting, because ultimately, it was the public sidewalk, and ultimately, public should know. And I'm not necessarily saying that anyone did anything nefarious or bad. I feel like it probably was just an oversight, because as opposed to in two thousand, when there were big meetings and they discussed this and had studies, this just kind of came about, because it had been closed for twenty years, and the only people that cared about it were the homeowners. But it shouldn't have been that way. There should have been more thoughtful examination, just like there was in twenty, two thousand and one. There wasn't. But I think at least the public has the right, deserves, to know what was actually, in its sanitized meeting minute version, spoken about at that meeting. So I'll be back, you know, in June, talking about this again.
Okay, would anybody else like to speak this evening? Seeing none, I will close public comment. We'll move forward with the topic du jour, East Side Stormwater Project Update. At the September tenth, two thousand and twenty-four study session, council was provided an update regarding the Elder Subwatershed Area Stormwater Management Study. Tonight, Mike Waldron from Strand Associates will provide an update on the project progress. Mike, you can take it away.
Great. Good evening, everybody, and excited about being back here for check-in number two and to follow up our evaluations in September of the improvements for the eastern Winnetka watershed, and I'm going to spend just a little bit of time, I'll go backwards, and just remind everybody what it is that we are talking about, and this was working as I could go. Okay. Please bear with me. So, eastern Winnetka, we're talking about the portion of the village that has a watershed to Lake Michigan, generally shown here on this picture. The watershed divide is generally Green Bay Road, that's a bit of a ridge, and everything east of Green Bay Road flows towards Lake Michigan, and you'll see within this eastern Lake Michigan watershed, there are four sub-areas. Elder Lane is down there in purple, Elm Street and Willow Road is in yellow, the Spruce Street area is in a greenish-blue, and then the Hubbard Woods area is in brown. And within each of those sub-areas, there's a series of outfalls to Lake Michigan, stormwater outfalls to Lake Michigan, and eight in total, and I'll kind of highlight each of them as I go along, because today, we're going to kind of walk our way from south to north up all of these various areas. And you remember, when I was here in September, we focused a lot on Elder Lane, and at that point, we had done a lot of modeling, we had identified some potential ideas. Since then, we have been fine-tuning, sizing things bigger, smaller, trying to find an optimum balance to deliver what we're trying to do, is a hundred-year level of service. And so, I'm going to go backwards now and give you an idea of what we found. So, you may recall, we shared with you existing conditions, a hundred-year level of storm in this area, and there were a number of places of concern. Generally, the places in red is where we're seeing more than three feet of flooding, but you can see that kind of spread around. Some of our high, our key points, the pedestrian underpass at Sunset, Winnetka Avenue Viaduct and Fuller Lane, you can see the reds in those areas, but there's some neighborhood flooding, too, under that hundred-year storm event. You'll also recall that when we back down to a two-year storm event, it indicates you're still having problems in those areas. So, this isn't a susceptibility to big storms, it's a susceptibility that you see on a fairly common timeframe. We took a look at storage opportunities, identified locations where there could be storage, we considered a lot of conveyance opportunities, could I change the size of pipes, could I redirect portions of the watershed in different locations? All of that came together in a plan that we feel provides you with the level of protection we want to get to here. But I'm going to focus first off on the bellwether, the Winnetka Avenue Viaduct, which is the most challenging aspect, and I think I showed that to you, because the viaduct is so much lower than the ground in the, in the area, and so we focused on this location. And unfortunately, the infrastructure that we identified to protect, truly protect you at that viaduct became very, very big. We looked at pumping, we looked at isolating the underpass and just providing pumping. Fifty CFS probably doesn't mean a lot to you, but you have an existing pumping station right now down at Hibbard Preserve, it's the one that handles the entire west side of the community and pumps it over the river, that's how big that pumping station is. It's, it's big, big infrastructure, fairly impractical in this location and a, and a huge burden for you. We also looked at the possibility of a forty-eight-inch gravity sewer that would run east on Winnetka Avenue, but you may recall, when I was here in September, we evaluated Winnetka Avenue, and there's a lot of utility in there, some big electric, you've got some main water lines going through there. It was one of the first things we recognized was that there is no room in this roadway for that size of a pipe. Even when we put that infrastructure in, it got us down to about four inches of flooding from three-point-seven, a little bit over three-and-a-half feet of flooding, down to four inches of flooding under the ten-year storm event. So that, it's a nice reduction, but we couldn't get under a foot even with that infrastructure during the hundred-year event. I don't think that's a practical recommendation. I may keep the forty-eight inch in the report, because if for some reason you decide to do some significant infrastructure work in the meantime on Winnetka Avenue, maybe there's room to fit that in there, but it is really not a practical recommendation going forward. So we did step back and take a look, what would get us to a point that seems practical? We're looking at a smaller pumping station again. This pumping station is about the same size as the ones you already have in town. You have a pump station at Ash Street near Duke Child's, you've got one down near Crow Island School, it's about this same size, a very manageable-sized pumping station. And it still gives us that same ten-year level of protection, from about three, a little over three-and-a-half feet, down to four inches of ponding in that underpass during the ten-year level of, or ten-year storm event. Seems very reasonable. We did a lot of checking on, on village vehicles and some of the police cars, they probably say, yeah, we don't want to go any more, any deeper than eight inch. Generally, a passenger vehicle can get through four inches, that seems very reasonable. So from that point, we then started to add rainfall. How far can we go before we kind of hit a, a critical mass? A twenty-five-year storm event has a foot and a half of flooding, that's about as deep as you're going to get for, say, a fire truck or one of the larger public works vehicles. You're not going to go any deeper than that. So that's kind of the, the warning area. And so what our thought is here is that we could also implement a level monitoring system here, that we could establish a point, say it's six inches of, of flow or six inches of ponding in that underpass, it would trigger a, a light system, a beacon system, that would give people an indication that the underpass is flooded to try to keep people from going through the underpass. We would also look at possibly painting the walls of the underpass with, kind of like at Seven-Eleven, it's got the measurement on the door to see how tall the robber was. We could grade the wall in the underpass, that would give emergency vehicles an idea of how deep it is, because they could go to fifteen, sixteen inches, and that would give them an indication whether they could still get through there during larger storm events. The hundred-year event, it was a great reduction, about two feet less than what we get now, which was nearly five feet, we're closer to about two-and-a-half, two-foot-nine inches. It is, I understand, is not the optimum, but as we mentioned last September, we might have to back off on the level of protection provided at the underpass, and I think that there's, this is a practical recommendation and a way to still provide protection at that underpass. So with that, then I'll go back into the, oh, sorry, Jim.
Just one quick comment on it. Just to keep in mind, too, with the, with the addition of a pump station, even though we are at that level of two-point-seven-three, it wouldn't stay there as long as it currently does now. So this would allow it for it to drain down in a shorter period of time, so when the stormwater event stopped, it, they'd literally pump the area down. So it wouldn't stay there, as you've known in the past, when we've had some big events, that water stays for quite a bit of time for the system to catch up. This would allow it to get reduced much quicker, so just pointing that out.
Yeah, you're right, that's a great point, Jim. It, it does definitely reduce the timing of inundation. So back to the overall sub-area and the plan that we've identified for the sub-area, you'll recall that we were trying to identify a new outfall to the lake, generally at Willow Road, to be able to bypass some of this watershed and send it away from the beach and from the current outfall at Elder Park and Elder Beach. So we've identified a sixty-six-inch storm sewer that would run on Sheridan to Willow Road and out to the lake. And you may recall, we also talked about doing a diversion structure right there at Elder and Sheridan. And the point with this was, with a rear wall in there, we could reroute most of the rainfall event for the common storms to Willow Road and get it away from, from Elder. Through our modeling, we got almost to a ten-year storm event, so almost every event up to a ten-year storm event would be bypassed at this location and diverted to Willow Road as opposed to the current outfall out at Elder Beach, which means, on a year-to-year basis, you're not seeing stormwater flowing out at the beach. In addition to that, we've had to extend some larger conveyance up into the neighborhood, so this would be an eight-by-five box storm, running from Sheridan up Elder and partially up Essex. Now, from a perspective, this is the size of conveyance that we're putting in on the west side right now. So it's, it's not outstandingly large, we're doing that right now to protect the west side, and we would only need this short stretch of, of this box. From that box, we would extend a sixty-inch storm sewer down Sunset and under the railroad. So one of the problems we ran into was, if we isolate the underpass at Winnetka Avenue, that means I can no longer take the west side of the railroad tracks down Winnetka Avenue. That's the way it goes now, we would have to isolate that off. We looked at storage, we looked at pumping, we looked at, at existing conveyance across the railroad and could not get protection on the west side, so we have to extend the storm sewer across and under the railroad. Now, a positive thing is that the railroad is elevated at this location, so we're not talking about a terribly deep hole, we would, we would, it would be kind of like a microtunnel underneath the railroad, and a fairly reasonable construction asked to extend this sewer and now serve the west side of the railroad tracks through a gravity system towards the lake. With that, we would work with IDOT, their storm sewer system on Green Bay Road is, is inadequate, sorely inadequate, it's only about twelve-inch diameter, which is not sufficient, so we'd be looking to increase those pipes to about a thirty-inch diameter pipe on Green Bay Road. We have storage identified just north of Trevian Way at Nutria, and that helps to shave off some of the excess flows that are coming from the west side of the tracks, and that's storage there under, right next to where the high school already has underground storage. And so we would want to start talking with them about the possibility of putting underground storage at that location. We would also extend the existing thirty-six-inch storm sewer up Essex with a sixty-inch storm sewer, and that's necessary, because that is what's going to receive the pumping from the Winnetka Avenue pump station, the, the underpass, and it allows us the rerouting of Fuller. You remember Fuller was one of the harder parts of this area also, struggled quite a bit with Fuller, but we're going to reroute Fuller away from Sheridan and into this new system. We've identified underground storage here at the track also, to provide protection for Fuller in this overall system. And then finally, some local storm sewer improvements. These storm sewers in the neighborhoods are only twelve and fifteen-inch, they're undersized for the neighborhoods. These are projects that you would probably tag to roadway projects, when you're doing roadway maintenance in the neighborhoods, you could increase storm sewer sizing in these locations to provide an overall service for the, for the Elder area. So all of these, this, this entire concept, it's not concept plan, this entire recommended plan at this point, and the infrastructure identified, we evaluated this based upon the existing Elder outfall through Elder Park to Elder Beach in its current condition. We didn't increase that size, we just assumed if that were to stay in place and nobody were to touch it, this is the program that delivers a level of protection for you. This, the village would probably go in and maybe line that sewer, but it doesn't have to be touched, and we can still achieve this level of protection. If the Park District decided to reroute that, if they follow the proposal that they had, had submitted to the village a while back, that works also. It provides a little extra capacity, which is nice, but again, the point being, this program works if nothing is done to that existing outfall, it still works. So let me show you what this does. This is the existing conditions under a ten-year storm event, you'll notice that we did still have significant flooding in the neighborhoods. This is the proposed condition under the ten-year storm event, pretty much no flooding anywhere, four inches at the underpass. You'll see the pedestrian underpass is completely dry. Fuller Lane is completely dry, and the intersections are fairly well-dry, there's some little bit of ponding on the roadway where we've got some low points, but we've pretty much handled the ten-year storm event. This on page thirty-two showed the existing one-hundred-year storm event, and this is the proposed one-hundred-year storm event. Again, Fuller Lane has no flooding whatsoever. The underpass, the pedestrian underpass has no flooding. We talked about the Winnetka Road underpass that does have about two feet of flooding at that location, but we would set up a warning system. There's a couple other spots in here where there's a low point in the roadway, those roadways are passable, and generally, like on the west side, the overall criteria was to be able to still get vehicles passing through these roadways and to be maintaining all the drainage or all the flooding in the right-of-way, which is what we're achieving. Over there on Hill, there's a little bit of backyard flooding, but it would be probably extending a small pipe into the back there to, to pick that area up, it's a kind of a low area in the backyards, but this is the level of protection that's being provided by that, our recommended plan at this point. I'm going to take a breath, and then I'll go up the beach, unless we want to stop and talk about Elder at this point.
Do you want us to ask questions about this now, or wait?
What do you guys feel? I, I'm neutral on that, so if you want to ask your questions about that particular piece, let's go ahead and do it.
Okay. I just had, had a quick question. Knowing that it looks like there's good opportunity for storage on Nutria District's property, is there an alternative to ta, take advantage of the parking lot we have next to the Indian Hill train station? Is that to, is the elevations, I mean, just trying to think of village-owned property?
Yeah, correct, yeah. We did look at that, that was one of the things that we hoped would be fruitful on the west side. It's such a long and narrow strip that we were only able to get about six acre-feet, which is smaller than what we did on Crow Island even, and it, it didn't provide a benefit. On top of it, then, we still needed a pumping station, and that pumping station was getting very, was getting very, very big, so that village-owned property on the west side didn't pan out for us beneficially. Now, the other thing I actually feel more positive about, too, is that extending that gravity line across means that you're not depending upon mechanical or electrical. If we put storage on the west side, we would still have to pump it out, and this gives you an option in which you don't need to depend on mechanical or electrical for serving that.
And that's gravity up Green Bay to Sunset, is what you're saying?
Correct, yep. We'd be redirecting north on Green Bay to Sunset.
Okay. And then the only other question I had about the kind of modified pump, you know, smaller pumping station, is there an opportunity to combine the smaller pumping station with a slightly smaller pipe? So I know the idea of putting in, I think, a forty-eight-inch pipe would be potentially not enough room in that right-of-way, but if we do roadway improvements, there is a weird dip in there.
Yeah.
Every time I kind of go under that overpass, that is, could you put in like a twenty-four-inch pipe or a thirty-six-inch pipe with the modified, smaller pump, and would that help that situation? Or is it two different systems?
It is two different systems. The problem is that the underpass dives down so much that if you got that pipe, you want to put that pipe down at the bottom so it can, so it can drain down and use that pipe, you're already in the ground, well, by the time you get past the underpass and just to the other side of Wilson, you're already ten feet in the ground, and I'd have to continue to fall with that until I got to Essex. And at that point, we were starting to find ourselves even lower than the, than the storm sewer system there. We did look at if there was the potential in which you got to a two-feet of flow and looked at that also, but it still didn't give us a benefit, so it's unfortunate. It will be a deep pipe if you ended up with the forty-eight inch in, but it just doesn't fit in there. The positive with the, with the pumping station is that it's, it's a forced pipe, so we can bring that up to the ground surface, we can run that fairly shallow, it's not a deep excavation, and the station's not very big. That's probably what you would take advantage of, the public-owned, or the owned parking lot at Indian Hill was a location for that pumping station.
And then to go under, to bore under the right-of-way for Union Pacific, do they have, at, at the level, they still control the entire right-of-way, so we would have to get
Correct.
Metro and UP to both agree? Yeah. Or just Union Pacific? Okay. All right.
And that's, it's, it's doable, it just takes time. Keep forgetting about that, thank you. It just takes time.
Yeah.
And since we're in the early stages of it, we can start having those preliminary conversations with them to try to get a, an idea of, of how long that would take, assuming that might be a potentially later phase, if we focused on storage first and, and that could come up, it still keeps us on track.
Wasn't Steve Saunders working on, and under, under Willow years ago? And he?
It was Brian Keyes that was looking at it, Waterman.
But maybe since we're in-
Waterman Construction became very expensive to do that.
But maybe since we're in, you know, conversation with them for Hubbard Woods, it's a good time to start the discussions before, why we have people at the table.
We know who the project group is now? Yeah, so they're on our shortlist.
Mike, did you, did, did your company do, make an assessment or an analysis of the outfall at Elder and the entire piping system up and out to the lake? Did you assess those pipes? Are they in good condition? I think we had an engineering firm do that in two thousand and twenty-three as well.
That's correct.
And was the similar analysis done and similar conclusions arrived at?
So Strand did not do a detailed analysis that we paid the consultant to do, it would just be a redundant investigation.
Right, okay.
But that investigation told us that the pipes themselves are in good condition. The only section that we could not do a survey on was the submerged section, which is underneath the pier.
Okay. And you saw that study?
I did, yes, yeah. And that's where, it's, it's not an unusual circumstance, we would probably say, let's line it, that certainly helps the integrity of the pipe. And the lining, frankly, will improve the capacity of the pipe, too, it goes from a very rough pipe to a much more, a better flow condition through the pipe, but, yeah.
And could, and I know we've talked a little bit about this in past meetings, but could that pipe that goes out into the lake be submerged and taken out under the lake bed?
Yeah, we talked quite a bit about that. Our concern, well, we've got, we have a maintenance concern.
At Elder.
It being out in the, in the lake bed, the accessibility to it, if something were to go wrong with it, would be a problem. But the bigger concern is that the lake bed is a mix of sand and then at some point a clay base. If we go down into the clay base, we have the possibility of plugging that pipe very easily, and the same thing with the sand. My concern would be plugging that pipe with those materials, which is why, when people do that, they'll build a crib out there, which would be a significantly, significant additional work to build a, a riser structure out there to protect that pipe, so I, I don't, personally, I would not recommend it, mainly from the maintenance standpoint and my fear that if it were to get plugged, you've now lost that capacity.
And the way that would work, just again, for a layman, the water would, less than a ten-year storm amount of rainwater, would go to Willow, and then there would be some kind of a leveling system or whatever that, when you get above that amount, it would then overflow to Elder?
Correct.
So how, ten-year storm, okay, but how, how often would this happen, that, that piping system would even be used?
I started working with you in two thousand and fifteen, we haven't had a ten-year since then.
Okay. Yeah.
I will say, though, so there is some, from some of the parking lot areas, that do still drain to that outfall pipe, so it's, it wouldn't be completely dry all the time, it would just be water that's collected on the Park District property that's tied to that pipe that would be going out, so it would be Park District water just trickling out into the lake.
Okay. And I think you're wrong on that, by the way. My daughter got married in July of two thousand and sixteen, and I think we had a monster storm that night.
I was probably just, I was getting my feet wet in two thousand and sixteen, so, yeah, but-
Goes for the record, because that, you could not get around that east side, you couldn't even get out of town. Yeah, so, anyway.
Nine years.
Nine years.
Yeah, so we did, we were pretty good, yeah.
I have one more question. At Willow, what kind of improvements, if, if most of the water will be diverted to Willow under this proposal, are there pipe improvements, is it going to be a bigger pipe? You know, what, what happens at Willow?
Yeah, Willow, right now, doesn't have that system, so it would be a sixty-six-inch pipe in Willow Road, that we would work with IDOT to get the approval to put that pipe down the right-of-way.
And what, there's a pipe there now, I know it's underutilized, how big is that pipe?
The outfall at Willow Road, that's right now, that's the one that we had redone just a few years back, I want to say it's a, I think it's a-
Eighteen, I think.
-pipe that we installed, that currently discharges out there now.
So that's a massive increase, yeah.
That's correct, yeah. But, but in this specific area, we have the open space, we have the real estate that to, that we could install this and, and restore that bluff area again.
Oh, so is that part of that, you'd restore the bluff at Willow and-
Correct.
Would the pipe go out pretty far, or?
No, it, it wouldn't need to extend as far out, we, we could extend it out so it discharges directly to the lake, and then we would put riprap, like it currently is now, and there's vegetation at the top, so we could restore all that.
And in case there- And in case there's anybody listening who may be one of those homeowners, there would be water quality standards to improve the discharge that's going into Lake Michigan now versus what's, you know, over what's happening now? Okay.
Correct.
You good?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So next, Elm Street and Willow Road. This is the flooding from our modeling that takes place during 100-year events. At this location, you can see that there is definitely flooding at Cherry. There's some flooding at, on Sheridan there, but there's also flooding in the backyards in these locations. So there's some pretty significant flooding in this location of Elm Street. And again, looking at a two-year storm event, it's not something that's just during heavy rain events. You, you have this kind of an issue under some more frequent storm events. So this is what we are shooting to try to tackle at this location. We looked at storage opportunities in this sub-area. One area is Village Green, but if you've ever been there, it's a lot higher than the rest of the
Good luck with that.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot higher than the rest of the, of the, of the sub watershed. It doesn't have any real value to it at all. So pretty much there's no storage opportunities in this sub-area. So we, we pivoted off of that, obviously. And then we evaluated conveyance. So to give you an idea, there are two outfalls in this sub-area. One is at Cherry Street, shown there at the bottom, and it, it handles most of the watershed. Then there's one up there at Elm Street, and it handles a little bit of the watershed, that area that's in yellow. Now, the biggest problem we have is Cherry Street. Now, it's a fairly big pipe, I think about a 36-inch at Sheridan and Cherry, but it necks down to a 20-inch. And even though it's got some slope on it, it is a significant restriction. That is what's causing us the problems at Cherry and Sheridan. The bigger problem, though, if you have never been there, this is where that outfall is located. So that top-left picture is standing at Sheridan, looking east towards the lake, down that narrow corridor. The one to the lower right is standing there, and maybe you can see it in the picture. There's a transformer on the left, there's a bigger transformer on the right. There's an awful lot of stuff in this very, very narrow corridor. So improvements down this corridor are going to be very challenging. We have talked about, again, a possibility of doing a micro tunnel to go down underneath the things that are there, but again, the expense of that and the disruption in the neighborhood there, I, I don't know that that's viable. So we kind of pivoted and started to look, what are the other opportunities? This is a picture of Elm Street. This is a 66-foot wide right-of-way owned by the village. There's nothing in here. It's not improved necessarily all the way out to the lake. It gives us some great opportunity to improve that outfall. And so we started to look at rerouting the watershed. And if I reroute just even a portion of half of the watershed, that's significantly improved conditions at Cherry. And so that's the balance that we're doing here is the possibility of rerouting flow from this watershed, reducing the amount of flow that gets to Cherry and taking the pressure off of Cherry. I'll also let you know that we're also looking, we've taken all these models and combined them, so now it's one big model. So we can much easier say, what if I send something here versus there? And so we are also looking at sending some flow down to the new outfall at Willow. Now, Willow right now is intended to be a 66. That might make Willow, where it goes out to the lake, bigger, but this is that fine tuning we're trying to do to get the, to get the pressure off of Cherry and redirect flows. I personally think Elm is probably our best option because there's a pretty wide corridor there. We've got some capability to do much larger conveyance. With this, there's local storm sewer improvements that need to be made. Storm system in here is smaller than it needs to be, so we can convey some of those flows out to the system. And I'll talk in a moment about the possibility of even using Elm as a relief for the Spruce Street area watershed to the north. So this is pretty much all conveyance improvements, but we're seeing some, some real positive stuff, being able to get pressure off of Cherry and redirecting flows in this location. So if I head further north, this is the Spruce Street area. And here's the flooding on Spruce, in the Spruce Street area. It's very minor. This is a 100-year flood event. You can see that there's a little bit of flooding at Sheridan and Maple. Maple Park actually floods, so it's already kind of acting as a bit of a detention area of sorts. And then there's very minor flooding up in the, in the upper parts of the, of this watershed. So, and two-year event does cause a little bit of problem, not significant, but it's definitely not what we're seeing in some of the other watersheds. Conveyance, there was absolutely no storage opportunities in this area. We didn't, there's a park at Sheridan and Maple. It's, its elevation is quite high. It wasn't showing us positive. There's Maple Park that's already there. The problem is if you started to, to lower Maple Park, then you get too low and you have to come up with a new outfall. And that's not a good place for another outfall. So we took both of those options off the table. Everything we're really looking at is conveyance. You can see Spruce Street here. It takes on about a little over half of the watershed. And then there's an outfall at Lloyd Beach that takes the northern part of the watershed. We don't want to send anything more north to Lloyd. I think we'd like to keep that as it is, but we did look at redirecting flow away from Spruce and again, down to Elm because of the opportunity at Elm. Possible to even eliminate that outfall at Elm Street, which might be a positive for the village in that location to just completely remove that outfall. And could somebody, did I, what did I say? Spruce? Remove spruce, I'm sorry. Eliminate spruce and take advantage of Elm. From a regulatory standpoint, it, it's, could be a positive to go back to them, say, hey, look, I'm getting rid of an outfall and combining them. But that's, that's probably the, the best opportunity that we've got here. And with that, we're going to do some conveyance improvements, increase some of the piping, and our modeling is showing that that's eliminating the flooding at this location. Not Maple Park, that still floods a little bit, and there's a low point in the roadway, but generally we've eliminated the flooding there. The only thing we would do at Lloyd is the upstream system, like most of the other neighborhood systems, is, is undersized. Lloyd from our modeling actually has capacity left in it. And so we would up, increase the pipe sizing upstream of this to help that neighborhood. So that's Spruce. As I said, not a lot to do there, but we've got some good ideas and fairly straightforward improvements to, to improve that area. And then the last study area is the Hubbard Woods or the, in the ravines area on the northern end. This is the 100-year flooding in this location, and most of the flooding that shows up as reds and yellows is in the ravines, which is not posing any property damage, any threat to any of the locations. There's a little bit of flooding at Foxdale Avenue and Eldorado Street. We've got an idea for that. And then the, but the main location that shows us flooding is at Sheridan Road, the curve at the bottom of the ravine at Sheridan Road. I know IDOT did an improvement, and my understanding is since that was done, Public Works has seen great improvements there, too, but our modeling still shows, certainly during 100-year, that there's still flooding. If we back that out to a 10-year, we're also still seeing flooding and a little bit of flooding at the two-year storm event. This one, so I thought Winneka Avenue underpass was a challenge. This one's kind of a, a bigger challenge, quite frankly. And let me try to explain this. This is a picture standing at that curve, and this is looking more northeast, right at the curve. And if you were to take the curve to the left, you're heading north and up into Glencoe. And you can kind of see in the picture that the roadway is tilted a little bit. That's a super elevation in the roadway. So similar to like a racetrack, the inside of the curve is lower than the outside of the curve, and that's to help drivers from skidding off the road.
And going faster.
And, and allows them to go faster, which is excellent. But in this case, most of these curves are going to have super elevation. I can't get rid of that super elevation. In fact, I would not want to get rid of that super elevation. It is necessary. But what it means is that that inside curve is always lower than the upper part of the curve. There are inlets in the inside of the curve, but IDOT only designs to a 10-year storm event. So inlet capacities can cause us some problems. And so this is a little bit of a perspective on what's going on there. With a low point in the inside of the curve, the outside edge of that curve is a foot and a half higher than that inlet. So if you've reached inlet capacity, your roadway's going to start to, to fill up with water. Heading further beyond the outside edge of the curve, the ground continues to rise before it breaks and starts to head down towards the lake. That's two and a half feet higher. So during extreme storm events, possibility of the inlet's being plugged, the storm sewer capacity being reached, you can fill two and a half to three feet before you start overflowing out of this curve. Again, I could lower the curve or lower the break there, but it's, it's still going to flood this roadway, and I can't take the super elevation out of it. So the only real option in this location would be to put in a high-capacity inlet on that inside radius of the curve. The problem, going back to the picture, is if you've been there, once behind the back of curve, the grade heads right up the ravine embankment. So it would be a significant effort to put that inlet in there in a high-capacity inlet in that location.
Can I just, this looks, it's going downhill or it's
At this point, yes.
It's going downhill. So how does, where does the water go that's going up at this curve that's, that you're saying floods?
So this roadway, when you look at it, is tilted like this.
Yes, so.
So you're going down, and it's coming here. So there's inlets where that arrow's at. There's inlets along in here that IDOT installed. So the water's coming down the ravines this way and that way, and this is the low point.
But it doesn't just go down the hill and gather at the bottom of the hill? It still gathers right there?
This is the bottom of the hill.
Well, that is, but then as you're going north, it's going downhill as well?
Go north, you're going back.
You're going back uphill? Okay, in the picture, it looks like it's going down. That's why I wanted to clarify. Okay.
The inlets are at the lowest point, and they are at the lowest point in the roadway. So where that arrow is showing is where the inlet is at. Behind that, you in that picture, you're going uphill to the south. Ahead of you, you're going uphill to the north. So you are right at the bottom of the sag in the roadway. And all the water's coming down the hill. Anything that can't get in the system's coming down the hill to this point.
Mike, does this cover for a 10-year storm as it is today?
I'm sorry, once more?
Does this, the system today, does it
Cover for a 10-year event?
Our modeling says no.
What, what, what level of?
Just barely at the 10-year. And we showed the two-year, and you, and there's still flooding on the inside of the curve. Now, something to keep in mind with IDOT, when they designed, they, they designed to get the 10-year storm event into the system, but they do allow flooding on the roadway so that it's passable. So in this case, their evaluation would probably allow this pavement to flood a foot in their 10-year storm event, which is why our modeling is showing us I'm flooding there.
And, and they also use the Bulletin 70 data. That's the old rainfall data when they modeled this versus the new rainfall data. So our new data is using the new rainfall, the Bulletin 75, so it's going to make a little bit higher. So I remember when Steve Saunders and I were talking to IDOT about this project when it was being done, they anticipated, I think it was maintaining eight inches total for that curb area and there, in the roadway as part of it.
Okay. We, we could, we could put up safety beacons here, too, but people are going to keep coming through.
Sure, do you have a, I mean, I'm a little, is there a, do you have a proposed solution here, or is it just sort of, just too much, too much infrastructure for not enough benefit? Or what are you, what are you saying here?
Yeah, you know, it's interesting, when you get into this, you kind of, you start to kind of tiptoe, like, oh, I don't want to get too big. I don't want to get too far out over my skis. But then you find yourself in a situation like this where it, it, you kind of have to go out over your skis, and that's our recommendation, is the flooding is on the inside of the curve, we would have to establish a, a high-capacity inlet, something that's going to allow that 100-year in, which means I have to big, put a bigger pipe under the roadway towards the lake. The most discouraging part of this is that you can stand right there and you see the lake. It's like right there. I just got to get to it, and that's, that's what you have to do. You got to get it into this underground system and under the road because I can't change the geometrics of the roadway. That's going to be a lot of talking with IDOT and, and, yeah.
Yeah, and there's actually a lot of infrastructure. At that lower area is our sanitary lift station. It's the one that take, and then it pumps it up the side of the ravine and out to Old Green Bay Road. So there's a lot of infrastructure that's there now. So anything that we would put in, we've got limited real estate that goes through there. So it's, it's pretty tight. Yeah.
Can I ask a question about what a high-capacity, you know?
What it might be?
Yeah, like, is it, like?
Have you ever been to Florida? I'm sure you've been to Florida.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You can see where Texas, you'll see their curb inlets are like, the curb's not even there. It's just this big opening. That's because
Those look like they need small dogs, like, and they hide alligators.
Yeah, well, yes. I mean, that's the kind of thing. Now, IDOT doesn't have a standard for that. We, there would be some working. Most likely what would end up happening here is that this, this inlet would be behind the back of curb because IDOT's still going to, going to say, well, I can allow some flooding in the pavement. I don't disagree with that. If I can keep an open lane to one side, I could flood over the top of the curb, but I would have to dig into the embankment. We're talking about retaining walls to hold back whatever I dig into, and it would allow the flow to come up over the curb and into this structure, which would be a graded structure, not something that people could access. It would be a lockdown grate, but that's what I'm visualizing here.
Is, is the slope on the curve too steep? Like, could we level that out so you've got more surface drainage?
On the curve itself, on the roadway itself?
Correct. So instead of two and a half feet up, as shown in this, you make it like a foot?
Yeah, and that's another design standard. So what they will look at is they will look at pavement surface, the traction on the pavement surface, the design speed for the vehicles, and from that, they calculate what is that required elevation? So it's a, there's a defined standard to it.
What if you put a stop sign down there?
I'd probably make a lot of other people angry.
That would work?
But
But I, I don't think, even doing that, I don't, I don't know that you would get a, a big advantage out of, out of doing that. Once you've got to put the inlet in
What I'm saying is you make it basically flat, put like an intersection kind of situation down there where it can be flat, so, right, cars are going two miles an hour, five miles an hour?
Yeah, it, it's, the, the difficulty here, though, is it's also the slope coming from the north and the south. It comes down pretty, pretty steep. So as you're making those bends, if you, if you go too there, too fast down there and then it gets flat, to Mike's point, if it gets any kind of ice or anything, there's nothing that's holding the vehicle on the curve, they'll just slide straight off. So you'll have, the guard, we'll be replacing guardrails all the time.
Sort of along the same lines. Right now, when we have a big rain event, is there something that triggers the police or fire to go out and close down the road at that area? Or what do they do now?
Yes, so right now, the police monitor it off, if we know there's a, a larger rainfall event or something coming through, police will monitor it. And if they think it starts to get too, too deep down there, they actually will call Public Works and will put out barricades at the, at the north and south end.
Do we have, do we know how often every year that happens?
I want to say since, since IDOT's made the modifications for the overflow and the increased pipe size down there, I, I want to say maybe once or twice at most?
It's been a little bit more than that, but not more than 10.
A year, yeah.
I'd say, no, 10 in the time since the improvement.
Yeah, so I was going to say just a couple times a year if, if that, yeah.
So in light of that, the other stuff in the watershed's pretty minor. Again, pipe size capacities, a little bit of redirection to help the flooding that's down there at Eldorado. But again, another watershed that doesn't have widespread flooding, and, and we've got some good ideas on how to address that. So, so this is a schematic of where we are today. We have gone deep into Elder Lane and identified recommendations. We've gone fairly deep into Elm, Spruce and Ravines, similar to back in September. We're kind of fine-tuning and balancing and figuring out and, and certainly getting some feedback. And we've had two check-ins at this point. So now we're looking to get in front of the stakeholders, namely Nutria, start talking to them about underground storage. And we are also at a point now where we, I think we can engage the regulatory agencies more than we have to this point. We've had some light conversations, a, hey, what if we were to? But now, we can actually come to them with some more concrete, concrete ideas and start to get some feedback from them. The idea would be to get in front of the public sometime in February, do an open house, share and get some feedback from the general public. In March, coming back to you, after having vetted everything, at that point, we would fairly well be established with what we think the final vision is. Working towards another open house in April, a final council presentation in May, and final report by chair. So that's where we're at today.
So no action required by council, but just an update, get you thinking. Lot of stuff going on down there, that's for sure.
Well, I like the way the plan is clearly so customized for every single zone, and clearly, you all know our community, which, which helps. But yeah, I think that makes it very thoughtful, and using and maximizing what we have, too, and not just tearing it all up and coming up with new solutions.
So Mike, with, with the Elm Street opportunity there, are you saying that you could actually do nothing at Cherry?
Correct. We would leave Cherry as it is. That's kind of our goal, because I just, I don't see how I get in there and dig. And if you've been there, the, that, that slope is pretty steep, and so we would just leave Cherry as it is. I don't want to close it. I still think it's got a benefit, and my modeling's not showing that I can actually close it, but I wouldn't have to work there.
Yeah, one of the things that we would look at is taking a look at the, assess the condition of those outfall pipes. And if we want to keep it, we can line it. So we could structurally line it, so we're preserving it for, for the long term, yeah.
Warren, you had a question?
Mike, can you pull up the slide for Elder?
Yeah.
Just that section?
Might be easier for me to jump out.
It shows the new storm sewer, the 66. Yeah, that, great, thank you.
Yeah, let me get it big on the screen here, too.
Whoop. There it is. Warren James, 1083 Cherry. As an individual, although you know me from the Park District and my time as the Chair of the Lakefront Master Plan-
The question.
The question, or the observation is this. The-
No, no, you said you had a question.
I had a question, well, it's a question for Mike.
You have an observation, hold there for public comment.
A question for Mike. How deep is that storm sewer, as proposed, going up Sheridan and out Willow? It's a 66-inch diameter pipe, up Sheridan, out Willow. How deep is that?
I'm sorry, off the top of my head, I don't know. It's this, it's the depth of the existing storm sewer there right now at that intersection.
Nearly 15 feet.
It could, yeah, it's probably about that deep, yeah.
And that would, and so my question is, would-
So your, your proposal is take a 66-inch pipe, about 1,500 feet, at about 15 feet deep? Do you have any idea of how much it would cost, including the rebuild of Sheridan Road, to do that?
I could give you that number, yeah. It's, it's very similar to the improvements that we're doing on the west side. It really doesn't, it's not a whole lot different than some of the conveyance stuff that's happening on the, on the west side. There is no, as I kind of had mentioned before, there's a, there's a tiptoeing that you can do to try to say, oh, I don't really, but if you're going to deliver a level of protection, 100-year level of protection, you are talking about large infrastructure, and it is, it's, it's large infrastructure. That's, but that's not an unusual project, 15 feet and that size of pipe, yeah.
You guys have any more questions? Hold on, Ted. No, Ted, I'll get to public comment in a minute.
No, that's a real question.
Okay, go ahead.
Mike, did you consider Oak Street as opposed to Elm Street instead of, for the diversion from Cherry? Why not? If not? Oak Street is a 60-foot, 66-foot wide street. It's undeveloped, except for the encroachments by the private landowners to either side, but it's a public 66-foot street.
Is there an outfall there?
No.
We're not looking to make new outfalls, Ted.
Oh, yeah, okay, all right. I, that's, I was just wondering to say all that.
That would happen after you and I are long gone.
You're right, that was a driving factor. We did not want to punch a new outfall. All of these are actually existing outfall locations.
And, and the, and that assumption is probably predicated on, it's easier to make improvements to existing outfalls than to try to get the permitting regulatory bodies to approve a new outfall?
Yeah, and changing a land condition, yeah.
Yeah, I mean-
Just so we're clear on this-
Okay, thanks.
Just so we're clear, on Tina's point, talk for a minute about what the process of getting a permit to dump stormwater into Lake Michigan looks like.
Yeah.
A new outfall.
Right, I mean, that's kind of where our work started, was working with the regulators to put a new pipe out. It is an uphill battle. So having one and being able to help them to recognize that we are providing, with these improvements, we're going to be providing significant water quality improvements up in the watershed. For them, that is one of the biggest items, is to show, I am increasing, I'm improving the outfall that is already there. The other point is that all of this flow already goes to the lake. It's not like I'm adding additional areas to the lake. I'm, yes, I'm getting it there through larger conveyance, but I'm improving it significantly. So, but staying in the footprint of the existing outfalls is, just from a regulatory aesthetic, to not have to pull a new permit is a huge benefit.
What does it take?
What did, like, the Army Corps, we took five years to get the Army Corps permit on the west side. So you're talking about half a decade to a decade to try to get through all the concerns that they've got.
Are there other regulatory agencies that weigh in on Michigan charge?
Yeah, yes. MWRD, IDNR, IAPA, Army Corps, they'll all have something to say about it. We've been in contact with all of them, and mainly, the question we get asked is water quality. And MWRD has a standard that we can easily meet with the standards that we've been doing on the west side, some of the separators and the storage. We know that we can meet that. And we've also got modeling, we've performed water quality modeling to be able to show them the water quality improvements.
Excellent.
Yeah.
On that point, Mike, can you contextualize sort of the incremental improvement in the water quality, you know, environmentally and so on? Is it, is it a dramatic improvement to what we're putting out to the lake right now? Or is it incremental? Well, how would you, how would, you know, if I'm an environmentalist-
Right.
What would you say to me on that?
Right, so for the parameters that they are looking for us to reduce, we're probably showing about a 50% reduction in those bulletins. MWRD will hold us to a 20% reduction rate, is why I'm saying that we know that we can show even better than that.
Okay, 50% improvement, yeah.
And we should.
Yeah.
It's our obligations as steward of Lake Michigan to make sure that we stop putting bad water in there. Any other questions? Go ahead, Tina.
Just a, kind of a geeky question. Is there a greater opportunity to improve water quality with larger structures than with smaller individual outfalls? Like, I remember reading something on another project where there is actually, the larger the outfall, you know, provides a better opportunity to design a system that can capture more of the sediment and other things, or is that not really proved out?
I, no, and I think you're, you're right in that to a point. You're going to get to a point, and when that, the amount of flow that's coming, that's, that treatment structure becomes a much more in-depth, you start getting into a real treatment facility. Whereas, we're talking about removal facilities. And so if we implement in various locations up in the watershed, even before we get down to the bottom, it then reduces the size of that structure. So you could take the whole thing, when, way back for the west side, when the west side was getting diverted here, yeah, it could have been done, but that was a large treatment facility. We're, we're not anywhere near that. We are trying to provide water quality up in the watershed to diminish the size of that down at the bottom of the hill, if that makes sense.
Yes, it was coming from, if there's an opportunity, not saying that we would do it, but if there's an opportunity to, in the discussions with permitting agencies, to say, look, we're going to give up, I think it was Spruce, was it Spruce?
Yeah.
Right.
That, that, but we're also going to expand the size of Willow, but it creates a better opportunity, you know, you know, same, same comparison. The opportunity for water quality improvement is larger.
Yeah. There's, there's really nothing on the system now, and so that will be, right, that, that will be an important point for them, yeah.
And I just want to clarify one thing, if anybody might end up watching this later. Mike, when you, when you mention a water quality facility, we're not talking about a building or anything that you can see, it's all stuff that's going underground. But I mean, people can, when they hear the word facility, you might think that we're going to be building brick houses around, that we're going to put equipment in, but there's nothing like that.
You won't even know it's there.
Right, it'll all be underground.
And it's, it's not electrical or mechanical in nature, so it requires no power.
Okay. I know somebody will ask me that.
Oh, yeah.
So, okay. Any more questions up here at this point? All right, let's go to public comment. Would anybody like to share their thoughts on this issue? Come on up.
Thank you, Warren James, again. Just want to say, Mike is an outstanding engineer. His work is exceptional. We have every reason to trust and respect everything he's done. Thank you. My observation is that the distance between the proposed outfall at the north end of Elder Beach, as proposed by the Park District, and the current Willow Road discharge is less than 500 feet. Because of the geometry, the distance north along Sheridan Road and then east on Willow is about 1,500 feet, 1,700 if you get out 200 feet offshore. So it's a very long length of pipe to discharge 500 feet away from where the Park District is proposing the enhanced and relocated discharge. The other comment is, we all know it's the big rainfall events that coincide with the beach closures. It's, you know, it stands to reason. I'm not sure if relocating that big rainfall event to Willow is going to make much difference the day after the big storm event. It may, could. I think it's a very novel and interesting idea to take the low-flow events and convey them north. I think that's very creative, again, at substantial expense. Keep in mind that the Lakefront Master Plan identified moving swimming south and stormwater north so as to separate the uses. As Elder, we have that primary discharge between two steel jetties, and that holds that stormwater there. So would look forward to working with the village to find the most cost-effective solution that achieves both our goals of separating swimming and stormwater. Thank you.
Thanks, Warren. Anybody else? Come on up, Mick.
Stormwater negotiating team.
Yeah, I've already been asked to do some stuff, and I don't know if I want to do it. Anyway, Mickey Archambeau, long-term resident, eight years on the park board. I really just have some questions, because I was kind of anticipating we'd hear something about this tonight, but the stuff that I'm sure you're going to hear pretty shortly are the obvious ones. Has there been an estimate done on what this would cost? And do we have any understanding on how long it would take, how many phases, that kind of stuff? So if you started and you could keep going, how long would it be? And lastly, absolutely best-case scenario, when do you think you could start on the construction of this? Thanks.
Well, good questions. Mike put up a slide that shows our process for the planning component, and obviously, at that point, we go to market, and we see, you know, we get budgets like we did, just like we did on the west side. We, we go to the private marketplace. Sorry, Mike, I mean, we love engineers, estimates are probable cause, but I always feel better with a practitioner telling me what it's going to cost rather than a designer. I think we've all been there before, too, so it's just the way the world is. But anyway, you know, we would need to do that, to go out so we can get, get some verified pricing on what we're thinking about. We also, obviously, with the open houses, that'll bring into, into play public demand for this, phasing, you know, all that sort of thing. And, and the financing will also dictate what the phasing is as well. And we're not even there, because we don't even know what kind of a system we're talking about. At this point, Mike's just thrown it on the wall, and we're going to wait and see what sticks. And as we synthesize, we're going to get to something that we can actually start to answer the sort of questions that you're asking. It doesn't mean that certain things can't jump ahead, and, you know, if we are working with the Park District, that there are certain things that can be done now that are additive to the future plans, and that's the way we can approach that as well. But until we know what this all looks like, it's hard to have that conversation. So Ted, you want to say something?
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, Christine, I didn't mean to jump over you.
No, no, I don't, I don't-
Hi.
Okay.
So I had two things. You know, the first one is kind of just like, well, I don't know if you saw the news, but I guess, for lack of a better word, you know, officially, last year, we crossed the 1.5 degrees Celsius line, we're 1.6 for planetary warming. And, you know, not to be a cold, wet blanket, but it seems like all the models that you're talking about here and spending all this time on are quickly going to be rendered irrelevant as storm events increase. But the thing that I wanted to ask, again, and I've asked this many times, so it's my understanding, and I could be wrong, that back in the 1990s, when the village, you know, was having development, people would build houses, and then the neighbors next door would be unhappy because their house would start flooding, because of course, they lost their free stormwater retention pond that was next door when someone else bought that land and built a new house. And the village decided that the property rights of the old property owners were more important than the new property owners, and so they created these engineering guidelines, which basically mandated that new property had to account for and, and quote-unquote, retain, and, and get rid of the additional stormwater that was created by the new construction. And I think the idea was good. But when we built our home, like, 15 years ago, well, no, 12 years ago, anyway, the, I was, not surprisingly, very intimately involved with many aspects of its construction. And what I found most fascinating was that when the engineer came up with a stormwater plan for our house, the calculations were such that we, you know, would have had a big funnel, like a lot of these other houses, and the outflow pipe at the bottom of that funnel would have been about an inch. But that was, you know, to meet the required release, release rate for the water and all that stuff. And that pipe gets tied directly into the storm sewer. But of course, the guidelines from the engineering department were that, no, you can't do a one-inch pipe, because that thing will clog all the time, and so there's a minimum diameter of two inches. And I'm sure the engineers know, you know, there's Posel, was it Posels? I can't remember. Yeah, Hager-Pocell law, which show, which is that flow through a pipe in a non-ideal fluid is proportional to the radius to the fourth power. So going, in our case, from a one-inch to a two-inch pipe would have increased flow to, by 16 times, and would have completely, completely wiped out the delayed release of our lot. It would have turned our lot into a funnel that directly pipes and pumps, drops that water as fast as it can into the storm sewer. And while I think that the idea was a good idea, the intent was a good one, to try to minimize flooding to local properties, I think that this has, over time, as more and more constructions occurred on these small lots, where they've all been required to, you know, do the same thing, has increased peak flow during storm events, and has led to some of these problems. And I've asked, and all I ask is, you have all these people, can someone just look at this and model it and see if this is true? Because in our case, I believe it would have been a negative for the village as a whole. And, and no one has. And, and, you know, we're just, if we keep doing the same thing and we don't look at it, we're going to just be, as more and more things get built, we're going to have more and more homes and little lots that are going to dump more and more water, more and more quickly into the storm sewers, and that's only going to make this problem worse. So I just ask, you know, we have engineers, can we just spend like, you know, like, a few hundred dollars, I'm making a, to, you know, just to look at this and see if this engineering guideline is the best thing for the village as a whole?
Susie, you have anything you want to share?
No, because mine are, the northern portion of the Sheridan Road ravine is Glencoe, and I wouldn't want to ask a question until I saw the plumbing of that area as it goes up to Woodmore and where it drains, so.
Okay, thanks. All right, anybody else at this point? All right, we'll close public comment and bring it back up. Any, any last thoughts or questions that might have occurred in the interim?
I just asked Mike one question, and, and it kind of dovetails off what Mickey was saying. This project, if we sort of hypothesize what the final-
I just asked Mike one question, and, and it kind of dovetails off what Mickey was saying. This project, if we sort of hypothesize what the final vision would look like, I mean, you're actually only touching roughly half of the outfalls, maybe five, you're leaving some intact as they are. How does this compare as an infrastructure, infrastructure project to the west side storm water project? Just, we're all living through the west side, we've seen the digging and the progress and so on and so forth, big project. The scale of this compared to that is what?
Half.
Half?
Probably half.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
And it seems like the way this is potentially by subarea watershed, it can really be handled nicely in phases to minimize disruption, right?
Correct, yeah.
As opposed to the impact of the large dig.
Of course, with all the money floating around out there for storm water remediation, I mean, you know, it's, it's a high-class problem, but if you get the funding to do more than one, then maybe it's better to rip the Band-Aid off and do three at a time.
Well, sure. I mean, yeah, right. I mean, that was what I immediately thought of, knowing how much, you know, focuses on the, you know, the quality of Lake Michigan and the grant funding opportunity that could be there. And, you know, just jump into my thought, and then I'll shut up, but, you know, I would think that any opportunity to reduce the amount of storm water going in Elder Park would be beneficial, even if there is a 1,500-foot different, you know, a thousand-foot difference in pipe between, you know, where the two outfalls are 500 feet, and then, you know, the distance on Sheridan Road, because of the kind of the triangular nature, is 1,500 feet. That's got to be a win, right? To reduce the amount, it makes no sense to, you know, if there, if we can fund it.
Well, and the exercise is...
It all comes down into the details, but if we can fund it, I think that would be an awesome result for everyone.
And, and, you know, this is an exercise to deal with the commitments that Village Council made in 2011, to the east side as well, because it was horrible flooding there. I mean, it's a commitment that's been made, and one that, when I took this position, I agreed that I would push hard on it and wouldn't forget about it, because the west side was so profound at the time. But, you know, it, it's more that than anything, you know. It isn't an exercise about what's best for Elder Park, it's an exercise for what's best for East Winnetka. And the system is addressing that. Elder, it just happens to be one of the outfalls in the system. Conveniently, it happens that you guys are also bringing your applications through at this time, so there is a, an intersection here that adds a little urgency and adds some conversation to the, the whole situation, so. Anybody else?
I just, that was a great presentation. It's very interesting, the way you move water around. And I, I found it fascinating, so thank you.
And I was surprised to hear that a passenger vehicle should only really go through 4 inches of water, because I bet most people think they could go through more safely.
Unless you have a new big truck, go through more.
I have a feeling Mike was that kid, that when he was, you know, when he was growing up, he was probably down there on the beach digging trenches, trying to get the water to come in and out of the, the sand castles. People are just wired that way, right, Mike? And thank goodness they are, because they can solve our problems very efficiently. Okay.
Well, and the only other thing I would say about Ted's concern about modeling, I mean, I think by the fact we are looking at 100-year, I mean, you know, that's reasonable, right? That might become, the more, that may become the new 10-year model with changes, right?
No, I, I think Ted wants to model the, the storm water regulations that are imposed on each individual home, which one...
My first comment about temperature, one week...
Oh, yeah, okay.
Right, it's just that, you know, who knows what the future presents, but I think 100-year, you know, trying to plan for the 100-year makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, and I would add, with respect to 100-year planning, of, there aren't that many fully built-out communities that can actually achieve 100-year protection. We've been very fortunate on the west side to achieve that. Of course, the conveyance still has to be built, but that doesn't happen very often. I talk to my colleagues about it all the time, and if you're a, a community with a lot of greenfield development, yeah, you can do that, but towns that are built out becomes very challenging.
And I will say, even some of those greenfield development communities can't and won't plan for 100 years, right? The cost, yeah.
All right, well, what, oh, okay. May I have a motion with Jared?
One second.
That's a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned. Thank you.